I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Zion City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Fluminis?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Harrison?
Here. This time, I would like to call my pastor to give us a word. Pastor Ken Langley, Christ Community Church.
Let's bow together, or at least I invite you to do so. Father, thank you for the privilege of lifting up our community to you and our civic servants. Thank you for the assurance that you care even more to bless us than we care to ask, that you are eager to do good for your people. And in that confidence, we lift up this evening's proceedings to you, asking that every aspect of what we say and do will honor you and further the causes of justice and peace and harmony and prosperity for our city. I pray especially for those who are leaving office after tonight, that you would grant them a sense of satisfaction as they reflect on their years of service here, and that you would enable them to continue to make positive contributions to Zion. Bless their families and give them worthy work to do, we pray. And then too, Lord, we ask for your blessing on those who take office tonight, and ask that you will fill them with all good graces, that they might serve you and us well. Grant them integrity, courage of their convictions, ability to compromise where that's best, energy, health, wisdom. And, Lord, we pray that they might lean on you for the guidance that they need if they are going to be public servants worthy of that name. Thank you that we know, according to your promise, that you're present wherever people are gathered and ask for a sense of your presence, and in that confidence, we're going to look forward to what you do for us and for these public servants in particular this evening. For these gifts, we look to you and pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Would you please join in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is for agenda changes. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Item four, C.
Item four?
Seven, C.
I'm sorry.
Seven, C.
Table. Oh, we're going to table item seven, C, table. And then after citizen comments, we can call it five, A, if you like. Council does need to go to closed session for just a very short time, a very short time, after citizens' comments. So we'll call it five, A, if you will. And as for the purpose of litigation. Are there any other changes or amendments to the agenda? Here none. Is there a motion for the changes to the agenda?
Sole move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the changes to the agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fluminis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item five, citizen comments. The first person on the list for citizen comments is Clyde McLemore, Zion.
Good evening. My name is Clyde McLemore, and I come before this council again asking for justice for Zion prevails. Last council meeting, our newly-elected mayor asked everyone a second time what was their issue and took notes, so he was clear. Soon after the news cameras left and all the pastors walked out, it was business as usual. It laid on deaf ears. Motion hit the floor made by the police chief instead of tabling the motion to research the request, which the motion was to promote an officer to sergeant and hire two more officers. Justice for Zion is a grassroots organization of citizens who want justice. With 56 minority citizens, and our police doesn't represent the makeup of our community. Out here, I ask, out here, I ask, who would you promote? And the name Eric Barton came up. Eric Barton has an open silver suit during a drug bust in the hotter winter of 2011 and broke out a window to the house, searched the house, found no drugs, arrested several people, held them, then released them with no charges filed. Not only did he do property damage but false imprisonment, and this is just one of the 17 open silver suits against the Zion Police Department. But behavior such gets a promotion. This council is not going to continue to do what they want as they've been doing. We as citizens have rights. We're going to hold you responsible. Here I hold the Ferguson report. This is from Ferguson. I just want to read this, page four. Ferguson approach to law enforcement both reflects and refrain racial bias, including stereotype. The harms of the Ferguson police and court practices are borne and disappropriate by Afro-Americans. And there is evidence that this is due to part of international discrimination on the basis of race. Ferguson's law enforcement practice overwhelmingly impact Afro-Americans. Don't that sound like Zion? April 4th, 2015, Justice Howell was executed. This was an investigation by Lake County Major Crimes. Major Crimes' second man in charge is Lieutenant Terry Richards. He is also a Zion police officer. So far from the beginning of this investigation, why didn't he recuse himself, then want the citizens to trust the integrity of the investigation, which was comprised from the beginning with his presence?
Mr. McLemore, that is your three minutes, sir. That is your three minutes.
Well, at this point, at this point, look, I mean, y'all here for all the plans of glory, but we got a dead boy out here.
We are going to treat everyone exactly the same, and that is your three minutes.
We'll be back at the next.
The next person on the list is Ralph Peterson, Waukegan.
Hello, everyone. How are you? I'm here today to get right to the root of the problem, and I really kind of feel bad for the city of Zion because at this time, we have what we call the same soup, but it's being served in a different bowl in terms of Mike Nierheim and former state's attorney, Michael Waller. Nierheim has shown us, when he was running for office, he attended every black church there was and done the James Brown and the Camel Walk and made zillions of promises on how he was going to uphold the law. But to date, Mike Nierheim is not seeking justice. We've come to notice his purpose in office is to protect police. I personally, from my hand to his hand, have brought him in reports of a 60-year-old Van Austin being attacked like sheep, like wolves upon a sheep. He, to date, has not done anything nor made a call. From my hands to his hand, I brought him in audio of Darren Hannah screaming for his life. To date, he has not made a call. I brought him in several conflicting police reports where one officer said opposite of the other officer. To date, he has not made a call, and I'm here to warn the city of Zion that he has a track record of stalling and saying it's under investigation, and that's what this poor city could look like. That's what's going to happen to this poor city, but what's really sad about it, due to no transparency and no communication with the public, this is what causes unrest. This is how incidents like in Ferguson and other different cities, there's uprising. What I'm saying is that a large part of this lies on Mike Nierheim, and again, I scream to the top of my lungs, we have a do-nothing, police protecting only, state's attorney. Knowledge was given to us by Baltimore and by South Carolina. Justice was swift in terms of right from wrong. It's still too early as far as convictions, but clearly, I say, we seen justice work, but we have been led to believe in Lake County that it takes justice years and months. We must do better. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, sir.
I just have a question. What I heard you say is that you are unhappy with Mike Nierheim. Do you have a specific question or request of this city council? I did not hear that.
Okay. First of all, I want to say thank you, sir, for being kind enough to ask that question. Yes, I ask that you guys conduct, I'm asking that you conduct a thorough investigation because outside of Mike Nierheim, because his track record shows he has two gears. One of them is it's under investigation, and the second gear is I'm doing what I, all I can.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, Mayor Hill.
W.C.
Thank you, Your Honor, honorable sirs, gentle lady. I rise to bring to your attention a newsletter called The Macapolitan. This is put out by the Western Illinois Culture and Education Group, an Illinois 501(c)(3) organization, and its principal purpose is to show cultural, for arts, culture, education, recreation, and improved quality of life in McDonough County in general and the city of McComb in particular. I was only able to glom onto three copies of these. I'm sorry, I couldn't get enough for all of you. Because of the change in administration, with your permission, I will give these to Clerk Burkhamper to dole out as she deems appropriate. If I may approach?
Thank you, Mr. Bremner. And I do thank you all for your time, your courtesy, and your attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Morgan Batley, Zion.
Good evening, City Council, fellow citizens and residents of the city of Zion. I'm basically here tonight because I want to thank the mayor, Lane Harrison, Mr. Fluminis, and all of the incumbents and outgoing city council leaders. Really appreciate your service. Many times, people can get in positions, and the people who are not in the position don't seem to understand that you kind of have to get in a different view, a different seat, to see just how high that seat is. And as a citizen, I want to tell you that I really, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate the service that you have given this community. And that includes the fire department, the police force, the city sanitation district, you name it. I lived here, roughly 14 years ago, I moved here, and I saw a lot of things, a lot of good things going on, a lot of things that needed improvement, and I basically got myself together and say, what can I do to help? So what I did was I joined a local church, of which I've been a member for some time now, and I got involved. I began to work with the Park District coaching baseball, worked with the local school districts, superintendents, principals, teachers, raising my kids, doing what a neighbor does to make a community strong. Not attacking or disrupting something that didn't appear to be right or something that wasn't right, but I followed protocol and being respectful as my mother and my father and my teachers taught me as a child growing up. And I just encourage this community to really search deep and recognize that it's really all about love. It really is. It's really all about love, not about hating or being a hater. It's easy to hate, but it's really, really challenging to look at someone who you may despise and say, you know what, despite of me, I love you. That's not easy to say, it's not easy to do. There's a lot of things going on in this country today, but the real question is, what are we doing to resolve problems? What are we doing to help problems? Zion is not Ferguson. Ferguson is not Zion. For almost seven years, I personally, and the city council is aware, shoveled the sidewalk from my house to Elmwood Elementary School because I didn't want to see not just my kids, but other kids in this community walking on the streets where they potentially get hit by a car. I talked with the police chief at that time about it, and every police chief that's ever been in that office since I've lived here, I made it my personal business to get to know who he was. So when I had an issue, I would go directly to him. To this day, I have a direct line with the deputy chief, who I feel is very, very personable. If you give him an opportunity, he will actually talk to you. And I don't feel I need to get on the media to do that. I want to thank you all so much.
Thank you, Morgan.
At this time, as I expressed before, the council does need to go into closed session for a very brief period of time, but before we do so, I would just like to recognize some very special guests that we have with us this evening. We have Lake County retired Judge Larry Ingles. He was the chief judge for Lake County for years. And we have with us Justice George Bridges with us this evening. And we have with us Mayor Chuck Paxton. Is there a motion to go to closed session?
Sole move.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fluminis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. This should not take long. Is there a motion, please, to come out of closed session?
Sole move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fluminis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item six is the consent agenda. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda into the record?
Rule of minutes of regular meeting held April 21st, 2015 at 7:04 PM. Had approval but not release closed session minutes of meeting held on 22nd through 21st, 2015 at 8:42 PM. Bills vouchers 120782 through 120874 drawn on first pair of bank, total $524,081.23. And affirmation for motorcycle awareness number made 2015. And if I may make your motion to approve the minutes, I ask that you do so with the correction that I laid on the page for you on page four, ordinance, and its passage was omitted, and I encourage you to put that down.
I move approval of the consent agenda with the correction that would read under Tiff Grant, 2701 Sheridan Road, and that the ordinance 15-0-20 be passed approving and authorizing execution of an economic incentive payment with 2701 Sheridan Road LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fluminis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item seven, consider passing ordinance as follows. Amending Section 34-16B ambulance charges of the municipal code of the city of Zion, 1992. This is a second reading. Is there a motion?
Sole move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fluminis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item B, ordinance regarding the disposition of surplus property, namely a Toro riding lawnmower. This is a second reading. Is there a motion?
Sole move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fluminis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item C is tabled, item eight, A, capulation of bids to 2015 street program, Director Palangela.
Thank you, Your Honor. In your packet, you will find the bids for the 2015 street program. Staff request recommends awarding this project to the lowest responsible bidder, Payne &amp; Dole Incorporated of Antioch, Illinois, for the amount of $164,103.80. Roads included in this project are the 21, 2,200 blocks of Gabriel Avenue and Cardinal Boulevard between Galilee and Lebanon. funding for this project is from the Street and Bridge Fund.
You've heard the request. Is there a motion for its approval?
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the request awarding this project to the lowest responsible bidder, Payne &amp; Dole Incorporated, in the amount of $164,103.80.
Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fluminis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Item eight, B, consider approval of settlement agreement, Attorney Puma.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We're asking that the city council approve a settlement agreement with Grand Slam Sports and Entertainment. Pursuant to a settlement agreement, the city would be paying $55,000 to Grand Slam and dismissing its forcible entry and detainer case, and in that case, the city is claiming back rent of about $165,000. There are some other settlement agreements between other parties to the case that we're not a party to or aware of what their exact terms are, and that we're asking that you do this on advice of the city's attorneys, based on the trial costs, the fact that Grand Slam has been involuntarily dissolved by the Secretary of State and seems to be assetless, and that the plaintiff, Grand Slam, has claimed over $10 million in damages as part of the litigation, and we expect that the case would take 10 trial days before a jury, and that the cost of defense would be anywhere from $50,000 to $75,000 to try the case. So we're asking that the council approve the settlement agreement in accordance with those terms.
Is there a motion?
Sole move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the settlement agreement and a second. Discussion. Commissioner Hill?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to be sure that I understand this, Scott. You're recommending that we do this because if this would go to trial, there's no telling what a jury would award, and it could be up to $10.8 million. And what we're suggesting here is that the settlement be $55,000.
That's correct. The amount prayed for in the complaint is over $10, it's around $10.8 million, and there is always uncertainty when you go to trial with a jury, and this fixes your damages
I just want to, I'm not being cute when I say this, but I just want everybody to know that the city, part of this agreement, there's a confidentiality clause in it where we're restricted on what we can say about the agreement, but if anybody wants to file a FOIA, you'll get the whole agreement. You can get at this, but I also want to, I guess I want to express my troubles with settling. I think for years, citizens in our community have been asking, what exactly happened out there? How could this have happened? And for years, we were not allowed to talk about it because we were in litigation. And we were told that the truth will come out once we have our day in court, and I think many people patiently waited for us to have our day in court and find out what happened through our judicial systems. But now with the settlement, there is not going to be a day in court, and I have no idea how we will ever find out exactly what happened, who did what, who did what when. And I don't think our citizens of our community will ever know what happened. And that troubles me. I don't know what happened. In the position that I'm in, I can't find out exactly what happened because there are so many things that are said, and it troubles me that we are settling this, but I'm going to vote for it because the $55,000 that we will be paying is small potatoes compared to the millions of dollars that we could lose if it went to a jury trial, and I'm just trying to look out for the financial benefit of the city. But I don't like it.
I don't think any of us do. We really don't. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fluminis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hill?
Aye.
Commissioner DeTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye. Departmental commentary? Under announcements, I would just like to take a very brief amount of your time just to express my sincere appreciation. I've been humbled by this community numerous times from your expressions of, I'm sorry, your issue? No. Humbled by your expressions toward myself and my family for the years of service, and when you say years of service, it's not me. It's, excuse me, please, it's the years that your family doesn't have you. It's the years that these people sitting right here in the front row, and my daughter in the next row next to Pastor Langley, had to either wait for me to get to where they were, to wait for softball games, wait for activities, wait so that we could all be together. And after a certain amount of time, you come to the realization and the conclusion that it's time for them to stop waiting and for us to be with them, to be closer to them, and to enjoy their company. We have children and grandchildren all over the United States now, and Cheryl, who has been my rock, has been my right hand, has gotten me through a lot of times when, you know, you're ready to just walk away and say, boy, I don't know if I can do this anymore. Cheryl would say, oh, yes, you can. And right behind Cheryl was my dad, who is not with us now. He passed away this past January, and Dad said, well, he says, I don't know how you're feeling, but I know one thing. The Harrisons aren't quitters. And Dad, thank you, because there was times when you just felt like, whoa, I don't know if I can take another moment. But I want to thank Christopher, my son, and his wife, two grandchildren, Hannah, who is my granddaughter, and her mom's right behind her, Melissa, and Maddie is here. Did I say Peyton? I'm sorry. Maddie and Peyton are here as well, and hopefully you guys just get to see a whole lot more of us. And hopefully you guys just get to see a whole lot more of us. But, but, but thank you. And I think overall of that rests one thing that's unbelievably important and has been embedded in Zion, and I hope it will be embedded with us forever. And that is our pastors and our ministerial staff, our ministers that come and minister to us before every single council meeting. And I hope that that will continue. And I hope that the ministers will, will take up arms and be here all the time, not just when things get tough, but when things are good too. And, and they have been. And I just hope that that, that will continue. So with that said, I'd like to thank our department heads as well. You guys have been phenomenal, phenomenal. Every single thing we ask of these people, they have delivered. And things are not easy. They haven't been easy for you, I know. People ask you to help them to do things in the streets, and when you go for relaxation or when you go to dinner, people stop you and want to know when this is going to get fixed or when that's going to get done. That all comes with it. But I want to thank our department heads who are second to none. And then finally, our community. Thank you for being Zion. Thank you for being special. Thank you for being different. Thank you for being good people. And good begats good. Only good can come from more good. God bless you all. God bless Zion. God bless America. There'll be another council meeting.
Mayor, can I get my two cents in here?
Certainly. Commissioner Flumini?
The mayor has kind of stolen all of my thunder. He's, he expressed a lot of the feelings I have for the community. As I said at the last meeting, when I was elected to the council twelve years ago, nobody was more surprised than me. And I, and I'm surprised that at twelve years on a council, it seems like it was yesterday. Without rehashing all the good things the mayor said, I would like to go pile on a little bit. Zion's best asset, and I've always said this, is, is our people. When things are good, it's great. When things aren't so good, we have some issues right now going on today, but we're still all here and we're working together. I may go onto my next adventure in my life, but please don't lose what you have, okay? Stick together, look at, look out for each other. Zion's a great place. I'm not, many of you know I'm not from Zion. And, but I plan on staying in Zion. I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve you, and I wish all the best for all of us going forward. Thank you.
May nineteenth at six-thirty PM is the town board meeting, and seven PM is the next Zion City Council meeting. May twenty-fifth, city offices will be closed for Memorial Day. We're going to adjourn this meeting, this portion of the meeting, and then we have some special presentations. And I've lost my notes for, oh, I took them in there. I will go get them. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Flumini?
For the last time, aye.
Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Harrison?
Aye, and I will be right back. I'm going to read to you a list of accomplishments and organizations and many of the wonderful things that Frank has done for the city of Zion, not just as a commissioner, but as a person, one of the citizens of our community. Commissioner Frank, Frank Flumini, Zion planning and zoning commissioner for four years, chairman of the Zion Building Department Advisory Panel for four years, commissioner of building and public property for six years, commissioner of public works and engineering for six years, board of directors of the Solid Waste Agency of Lake County, otherwise known as SWALCO, eight years, coordinator of Zion Emergency Service and Disaster Agency, ESDA, for four years, nostalgia days committee, eighteen years, rebuilding together, board of directors, formerly known as Christmas in April, sixteen years, wounded heroes foundation, nine years, and many, many hours dedicated to Kringle's Kingdom, ten years. He is an award winner from the National Jefferson Award winner for community service. I think that's when they took you to Washington DC for, for the award. Zion Township Volunteer of the Year Award, Exchange Club Book of Golden Deeds Award, and Exelon Corporation Volunteer of the Year Award. And now, it gives me a great deal of pleasure on behalf of the Zion City Council to present Frank Flumini, key to the city of Zion, presented to Frank A. Flumini, City Commissioner, two thousand three to two thousand fifteen, with gratitude for your dedication to the task of furthering the development of the city of Zion and fulfilling your commitment to improving the quality of life of its residents. Presented by this city council, myself, Commissioner Jimmy Taylor, Commissioner Frank A. Flumini, Commissioner Mindy Deteen, and Commissioner Al Hill. Frank, thank you.
It makes you a little while to get up here. It's a great honor for me to stand up here with you tonight, Lane, Mr. Mayor. You've been a real blessing to me personally and a great person for the city. I just want you to know before I say too much, that before the meeting, your mother called me. And she said, I understand you're going to say a few words about me. And I said, yes. And she says, well, say some nice things about him, won't you? And I said, oh, any suggestions? And she said, uh, well, do your best. So I would just like to point out something, a few things that maybe you didn't know about our mayor. He's a human being, just like all of us. And he has a heart for this community, and he has a heart for this city, and I have been close to that. And I feel like we're losing the good man. We're not perfect, none of us. We made mistakes, and we have done that at the council as an individual, but all of us have been honest to the fore, and I'm thankful for that. I'm thankful I could say that I'm a member of the Zion City Council and that I served with this fine man. Let me just tell you a little bit about him. I had to write this down. He was a school teacher for thirty-five years, twenty-eight in Zion and, and a few years in other community. He's elected to the Zion City Council in nineteen eighty-seven. He served as commissioner of public property and commissioner of the fire and police until nineteen ninety-five. He ran for office of mayor in nineteen ninety-nine, and was elected with a seventy percent majority of the vote. He's elected to this, to these, to this position, three subsequent terms, serving as mayor from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and fifteen, that's sixteen years, at the greatest accomplishment, and it was unprecedented for a mayor to be elected four times. Lane set that precedent. Some of the accomplishments, I can't list them all, but I'm going to try to highlight just a few, and I won't be overbearingly long. But I'm sure that you'll say that what these accomplishments that I'm going to mention, that you didn't do this all alone, you had great people around you to help you, and that, but this was quite an ordeal, the years that you've been in charge of this city. We had the six million dollar facade program. Airlines United Airlines made that possible, getting the money from ComEd, and the, the community had the opportunity to improve the facade of their businesses, and that, that took a couple of years, but downtown changed the appearance of our downtown. And also, under his administration, but with other people helping, of course, Applebee's was brought to Zion, Walgreens come here, the Dunkin' Donuts come here, Jewel, Jewel expanded under his administration. They were going to leave Zion, and because of his administration that they stayed here in Zion. We also, we had Walmart come to our community. Market Square, beautiful hotel across the street here was built. Aldi's come to town. Bank at Twenty-Ninth and Sheridan was a place where the cake box bakery was at one time. Now they're down in the middle of the block of Twenty-Seven Street in a nice facility there. That all happened under the administration of Lane Harrison, and then it's all good. I call that the annex because I found a lot of time there, but also that was made possible under his administration. The country unit Thirty-Third and Sheridan was under his administration. Tollbirds, FedEx, Calpine Electric out in, pardon, Cancer Treatment Centers of America come to us years ago, and they were wanting to expand their facility. They needed thirty million dollars. We were able to kind of act as a, as a, as a pipe or a transit for them to get some money at a discounted rate going through the city. They, they borrowed the money, they paid it back, and right now they're, under construction is eighty-four million dollar addition, which is absolutely phenomenal. Many good things that you've been involved in, Mayor. There's been good days and there've been bad days. You know what? That comes with the job. Sometimes, like you said, you want to just throw your hands up and go. And I, I felt that myself. But I, I think it's because of the good help that you had around you, the city clerk and the, the department heads, every one of them, they're very special people. They've given their all to serve you, and they love you. And I know you had some physical problems a while back, about a couple of years ago, that hampered you to a great, a great degree, but you come through it all with a big smile on your face, and you made us all proud of you. So that was a lot of work, Mayor, and I understand that. I'm sure you're tired now of all that stuff. And I think it's time that you just kind of sit back and relax. So the city thought that would be a good idea. So we have something to, to help you relax. Would you please welcome her? Right now, Mayor, I understand that, that, that you're going to place a picture up on the wall with the rest of the mayors. So I would like you and your wife, if you would do that, take that picture and place it hanging on the wall where you want it.
I'd like to have my grandchildren help us to hang this on the wall. This idea came about as Mayor Chuck Pastner was leaving office, and his grandchildren helped him hang his picture. And he said to me just before he hung the picture, he says, you know, I think it's probably time that we hang colored pictures from, from now on. And so Chuck, I took your, your cue, your advice, and that's what we're going to do. We're going to hang a colored picture. So I have grandchildren come to me.
Your family can go down there and look at your wife.
And, and before I, I do this, I just want to say one other thing. Commissioner Deteen was a hundred million percent correct when he said, nothing that's been accomplished by this administration could have been accomplished without our staff and without the commissioners. Commissioner Flumini, Commissioner Taylor has been here the entire time that I've been there. Commissioner Gill has been here the last two years. We've worked together. And Commissioner Deteen has been here almost the entire time that I've been here. This is my mentor. This is my prayer warrior. This man. Commissioner Deteen prays for us all every single day, and we couldn't do anything that we've done without the help of the Lord. There's just no way. And this time, I'd like to thank, my, thank, I'd like to have my grandchildren. I would be remiss if I did not do this. Last week, I announced several different people who were in the audience, and I'm sorry, former Commissioner Chantel Taylor, I missed you. And, and I named everybody else, and then after I got home, I went, hm, actually, well, you helped me remember. So thank you very much, and.
Lane, I think you want to, I think you want to go down the middle.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, I asked one of the pastors that, that he would ask a blessing over the mayor and his family, and he did that already. But I've asked the mayor now if he would just do us one great favor, and that's to sing "I'll Break Down." This man has a tremendous voice.
(Singing) Oh, Lord, my God, when I in awesome wonder, consider all the worlds thy hands have made. I see the stars, I hear the rolling thunder. Thy power through our.
Thy power throughout the universe displayed. Then sings my soul, my Savior God, to thee. How great thou art, how great thou art. Then sings my soul, my Savior God, to thee. How great thou art, how gracious thou art. Cheryl?
We're going to proceed with the administering of the oath of office. Um, we begin first with the office of mayor. I will read the names of those persons participating and if they will come forward, please, then return to their seats and then we'll move on to the second. Um, is Cheryl, would you like to, please, go ahead. He'll be joined by Chris Hill. Holding the Bible for Mayor Hill will be Chuck Paxton, former Zion Park District Director and former City of Zion Mayor. Administering the oath will be the Honorable Judge George Bridges, Circuit Court, 19th Judicial Circuit.
Hi, Albert W. Hill.
Hi, Albert W. Hill.
Having been elected to the office of the mayor of the City of Zion.
Having been elected to the office of the mayor of the City of Zion.
And county of Lake.
County of Lake.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will enforce the laws of the City of Zion.
That I will enforce the laws of the City of Zion.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Great. You can't sit here anymore. Sit there.
Commissioner Taylor will be sworn in as commissioner, um, next. But before, um, we do that, I would like to recognize some special people who are here for Commissioner Taylor. Members of his family, his wife, Lynette Taylor, Mrs. Tammy Davis, Mr. Sean Davis, Lane Davis, Miss Brittany Davis, Miss Tara Loesch, Jackson Loesch, Miss Tiffany Taylor, Miss Chania Taylor, and Tucker Hudger. Holding the Bible for Commissioner Taylor will be his wife, Lynette Taylor. Administering the oath will be the Honorable Judge Larry Ingles, Circuit Court, 19th Judicial Circuit. (Inaudible)
Thank you. In 1963, when I became city attorney here, I never expected to come back as a retired appellate clerk judge and I swore you in 25 years ago, so I'm very honored. (Inaudible) after me. I, Jim P. Taylor.
I, Jim P. Taylor.
Having been elected to the office of.
Having been elected to the office of Commissioner of the City of Zion. Commissioner of Zion.
And the office of, uh, uh, the office of trustee in the township of Zion.
Trustee in the township of Zion.
And in the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
That I will enforce the laws.
That I will enforce the laws.
Of the City of Zion.
Of the City of Zion.
And that I faithfully discharge the duties.
And I faithfully discharge the duty.
Of said office.
Said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Time to go to work.
Mike McDowell will be sworn in as city commissioner, joining Mike is his wife, Donna McDowell. Holding the Bible will be Pastor Tim Mike Langley from Price Community Church. Administering the oath should be Honorable Judge George Bridges, Circuit Judge, 19th Judicial Circuit.
Repeat after me. I, Michael L. McDowell.
I, Michael L. McDowell.
Having been elected to the office.
Okay, Commissioner.
Having been elected to the office of Commissioner. In the City of Zion.
In the City of Zion.
And the office of, the office of trustee in the township of Zion.
Trustee in the township of Zion.
And the county of Lake.
And the county of Lake.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will enforce the laws of the City of Zion.
That I will enforce the laws of the City of Zion.
That I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Before I call this meeting to order, um, I would like to say, uh, I would like to guarantee you one thing. I don't sing. I, uh, call this meeting in the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. That sounds weird. Are there any agenda changes? During none, I'll move on to item number four, which is consider appointment of city commissioner to, uh, city commissioner and Zion Town Board trustee. And it's with a great deal of pleasure that I submit the name of Mr. Billy McKinney for your consideration to be appointed to the positions of Zion City Commissioner and Zion Town Board trustee. Mr. McKinney was born and raised in Zion, graduated from Zion Benton High School, and two years ago returned to live in the house in which he grew up. He graduated from Northwestern University. He has lived all over the world and throughout the United States. Through this, he has gained different perspectives on problems and solutions that can be applied to Zion. Mr. McK, uh, McKinney presently works for the Milwaukee Bucks. He was recently elected to the high school board and garnered 1,700 votes. I believe this speaks to the high regard and high respect with which he is held in our community. Mr. McKinney, would you please step forward and take the oath of office? Excuse me, I need a motion.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Holding the Bible for Billy McKinney will be a longtime family friend and neighbor, Tracy Johnson. Administering the oath will be the Honorable Judge George Bridges, Circuit Judge, 19th Judicial Court.
I, Billy McKinney.
I, Billy McKinney.
Having been elected to the office of Commissioner in the City of Zion.
Having been elected to the office of Commissioner for the City of Zion.
And the office of.
And the office of.
Trustee in the township of Zion.
And trustee for the township of Zion.
And the county of Lake.
And the county of Lake.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will enforce the laws of the City of Zion.
That I will enforce the laws of the City of Zion.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duty.
Of said office.
Of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I just wanted to say, uh, it's been, seems like every time there's an election, I'm just swearing in some of the officials and it is indeed an honor, it is one of the most enjoyable duties I have as a circuit court judge when I come here. Because when I come in the City of Zion, I can feel the presence of God here. And what I want to say to all of you newly elected and the previous elected is I charge you again to remember what our founding fathers said, and that is, is that unless God builds the house, unless God is in this city, you labor in vain who work here. And what I can tell you is God is here in this city and I know these men very well and I know that you will continue in that direction again. I thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to be in the house of the Lord and the house of the people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, item number five is to consider appointments of city commissioners to areas of responsibility and, uh, um, the recommendation that I am making is that, um, the Commissioner of Public Works and Engineering would be Jim Taylor. Commissioner of Accounts and Finance and Mayor Pro Tem would be Lloyd Deteen. Commissioner of Public Health and Safety would be Mike McDowell. And the Commissioner of Building, Zoning and Public Property would be Billy McKinney. Need a motion?
So move.
Second?
We have a motion in the second. Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number six is consider appointment of department heads and city officials. Uh, my recommendation is that the, uh, city and prosecuting attorneys be the law firm of Anso Link, Diamond, Bush, Vissiani, and Craft Hepper. Uh, city clerk, Diane Burkemper. Chief of police, Steve Dumian. Fire rescue chief, John Lewis. Director of Public Works and Engineering, Ron Colangelo. Director of Accounts and Finance, David Nabel. Director of Building and Zoning, Rich Hyanson. As the field coordinator, Brandon Bush. As, Assistant As the Field Coordinator, David Ratliff. And city treasurer, James Kohler. Need a motion?
I move for approval.
Second?
We have a motion in the second. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item number seven is consider passing a resolution and mending the personnel authorization by our rescue department for Chief Lewis. Chief?
Thank you, Your Honor, Commissioner. Uh, we currently have one firefighter paramedic who's seeking separation with the City of Zion, currently using his benefit time as he moves through the pension process. Uh, firefighter is seeking, uh, separation due to medical reasons and has been off the job and cannot do the job since February of this year. Um, in that time, we've been paying quite a bit of overtime each shift to cover his spot. Uh, I'm fairly certain now that he will not be back to work based on his past medical reports. So I'm seeking authorization to, uh, adjust our personnel staffing levels to add one firefighter paramedic. So we'll go from 15 to 16, which will allow me to hire one more to fill that overtime slot, prevent the need for filling it, and then this person will eventually fill the slot of the person leaving and then we will drop back down to 15.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the personnel authorization for firefighters and paramedics from 15 to 16.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there a discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Item eight on the agenda is to request permission to fill one firefighter paramedic vacancy and request the next candidate from the Police and Fire Commission firefighter, paramedic eligibility list per Chief Lewis.
Thank you again, sir. With the recent approval of our personnel authorization adjustment, I am now asking for the police, I'm sorry, the Fire and Police Commission to hire the next eligible candidate from the current published eligibility list for firefighter paramedic. This candidate will allow the fire department to reduce overtime incurred by the absent employee who is unable to perform his duties due to medical reasons. This candidate will ultimately fill the position left vacant upon the retirement of the employee currently off the job. Your positive consideration of this request will be greatly appreciated.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, the Fire and Police Commission seek to hire the next eligible candidate from the current published eligibility list for firefighters and paramedics.
I have a motion in the second.
Discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Next item is to consider a letter of agreement between the City of Zion and Zion Solutions regarding relocation of city radio antennas from ComEd property to the City of Zion fire radio tower per Chief Lewis.
Thank you again, Your Honor. Um, this has been a ongoing process since about December of last year. Currently, we have a radio tower north of Charlotte Boulevard by ComEd that's used up, utilized by police and city bands. It was put up several years ago to help with transmissions on the east side of town. With demolition of the plant, one of the things coming down would be that tower. So Zion Solutions offered to relocate, relocate those antennas to another tower on ComEd property near the IFCE pad. Um, we've run into a lot of stumbling blocks between the hold harmless agreement between ComEd, Zion Solutions, and the City of Zion. And as we worked further and further into this, it just got deeper and deeper into stumbling blocks. Um, what ended up being the best solution is not to have a hold harmless agreement with ComEd at all and then transfer those radios, or I'm sorry, those antennas to the radio tower at the Fire Station One property. Zion Solutions is still offering to pay the costs, have all the work done, it's just simply instead of going on their property now, we'll go on our property. So we're just seeking approval to sign the agreement, which you should have attached to my letter, saying that we agree Zion Solutions will pay and we will put it on C property.
Uh, Chief Lewis, uh, who's actually gonna do the work on that? Is Zion Solutions or?
Zion Solutions is gonna pay for the work. Radacom, our radio vendor, will do the actual work.
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we relocate the City of Zion radio. There's a reception in the lobby immediately after for anyone who wishes to stick around.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion?
Second.
No second?
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
The only announcement that I have is Thursday night, May seventh, at seven thirty, there'll be a special meeting in the Zion City Council to review the 2015-2016 budget, and there'll also be a closed session that will involve personnel. And the budget was put off till this time so that we would have the new council in place to discuss the budget that they'll have to work on.
What day was that?
Thursday, May seventh. Other than that, is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, yes. There's a reception in the lobby immediately after for anyone who wishes to stick around.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion?
Second.
No second?
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Taylor?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
McKinney? Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Congratulations. Absolutely.
Can I get you to join us here right now?